Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you all here. Really happy that you joined us today for our, I don't know, it's not quarterly, it's like bi-monthly town hall with Office of Life Information. We're really happy to be with you. I'm just gonna give you a quick overview of what we're doing today and then we'll begin with prayer and get rolling. So in a moment, we'll lead with prayer with Victor Vallejo Garcia, the Lifelong Formation Coordinator for Vicarious Three. And then we'll go into a conversation from Patricia Malinowski about some of the Renew My Church resources. You might find a use and interest that you have available to you. So she'll walk through some of those. And then the main part of our discussion today will be around really adolescent faith development and what some of the latest research is telling us. And then I believe sometime for a conversation in small groups around some of the implications for that or how we're seeing, you know, that play out. And, you know, I think that'll be really good. I know that's right around sixth grade and older, you know, gets more and more challenging to really engage young people in their faith. But there are a lot of really good research on how to do that and how to really help them move into that next step of their faith journey. That's kind of what we're doing here today. We will begin with Victor in prayer. I believe if you're ready, Victor.
Welcome, everyone. As a good Catholics, we always begin our prayer in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord Jesus Christ, you are our Savior. Enlighten us with your word. Guide us in our ministries, in our love that we give for your name. And as a prayer, let's do the reading, the first reading from today's readings. And for some reason, I'm not able to move it. Here we go. Emily, can you help us?
It's okay, perfect. So reading from Book of Hebrews. Brothers and sisters, God is not unjust so as to overlook your work and the love you have demonstrated for his name by having served and continuing to serve the holy ones. We earnestly desire each of you to demonstrate the same eagerness for the fulfillment of hope until the end, so that you may not become sluggish, but imitators of those who through faith and patience are inheriting the promises. When God made the promise to Abraham, since he had no one greater by whom to swear, he swore by himself and said, "I will indeed bless you and multiply you." So after patient waiting, Abraham obtained the promise. Now, men swear by someone greater than themselves, for them an oath serves as a guarantee and puts an end to all argument. So when God wanted to give the heirs of his promise, an even clearer demonstration of the immutability of his purpose, he intervened with an oath, so that by two mutable things in which it was impossible for God to lie, we who have taken refuge might be strongly encouraged to hold fast to the hope that lies before us. This we have as an anchor of the soul, sure and firm, which reaches into the interior behind the veil, where Jesus has entered on our behalf as forerunner, becoming high priest forever, according to the order of Melchizedek, the word of the Lord.
Thanks, Peter God.
Thanks, God.
So I thought this reading is really appropriate for us. God doesn't overlook our pastoral work. He doesn't overlook our law for his name. And he doesn't overlook our service for his people. It's a beautiful reading for us today. He's always encouraging us to be imitators of faith and patience. And he's always promising something to us. And he's telling us to hold fast to the hope that he lies before us. God is the high praise forever. So I got a few questions for you to ponder today. What is struggling the most from the letter of the Hebrews? What is God telling you for this reading today? What does he mean that Jesus is the high priest forever? God is always speaking through us. And today's reading is wonderful and is meant for us to understand and to ponder the beautiful truths that are on it. And all these are we put in Jesus Christ, amen, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you so much, Victor. Now, we're gonna have Patricia Malinowski from Vicarious Five to walk us through some Renew My Church resources. I should say first, I forgot to mention, this meeting is being recorded because we like to send out the link afterwards to people who couldn't attend. So this is being recorded. However, the breakout groups later, that will not be recorded. Those conversations are not included in the recording, just so little disclaimer there. And take it away, Patricia.
Welcome, everyone. I'm so happy to be here with you. What I am sharing, are you seeing the brochure, first of all?
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good. I'm gonna start from the beginning then and move forward. What we are going to do today, as Kevin talked about, is talk about one of our fabulous. We actually have so many resources. And this is a screenshot of the renewmychurch.org, where you would go, first of all, to find these resources. I'm gonna navigate us through briefly. I will send this to this PowerPoint to Kevin, so you can have it. And so, once you're in the website, you're going of the Renew My Church, you're going to find the Resources tab, which is highlighted in red right here in the middle, and it's also on the side. And then you're gonna go down to the Renew My Church brochure. And you see this beautiful brochure, which is actually like an ebook. It is 24 pages. What I'm going to do is highlight some of the book, not all of it. And you can reflect on it for yourselves. You're going, once you're in that website, you have the dropdown and you will click on Renew My Church. We are, as an archdiocese, in strength. Renewal is our strength. It's our ability to answer the call. We are guided by the Holy Spirit. It's woven into the very fabric of who we are and what we are. Renewal is responding to the energy that God is calling us to transform the world. It is a hurting world, as we know. It is a loving world. It is a world full of God's beautiful people that we are called to encounter. And there's various ways that we can encounter people. The one of the most important ways is through our story of renewal, our God story. It's a shallow entry point, but we come to meet God, we come to meet the Holy Spirit, we come to meet each other. God is alive and working vastly amongst us. The seeds are being planted, the Holy Spirit is alive, and our parish is within our leaders. And this resource is a tool for you to engage for yourself and also to move forward and invite others. Is this something new? Is this something we all just came up with, sat around one day at the lunch table? Absolutely not. Our church has a historical bold mission, and it began with Saint Paul VI, where he said evangelizing is in fact very, very important, grace-filled, and a vocation proper to the church. Pope Saint John Paul II also reiterates, "This is the moment, the moment has come for new evangelization." Pope Benedict XVI, we know, he states, "The church is missionary by its nature, by our principal task, that being evangelization." And that was actually presented in an address on October 26. Evangelic Guardian tells us through Pope Francis, "I have a dream, a missionary option, suitably challenged for the world today, to evangelize the world. We must, we absolutely must go forth and proclaim the gospel, looking to our church documents as a starting point, proclaiming inward and indeed." There's many challenges we face. There's trends we're seeing. They're national, they're at our, within our archdioceses. We see the decline. We see the stop in those that have been participating, that have come as youth to our faith formation and religious ed dropping. We know that millennial Catholics don't attend Mass weekly. They don't attend regularly. And that many that were raised Catholic have already left the church. In our own archdioceses, we see Mass attendance down 35%, baptisms 40, weddings 33%, and vocations to the priesthood 43%. But this won't stop us. We're going to continue and we're going to move forward. As Matthew 19, verse 23 states, "For human beings, this is impossible, but for God, all things are possible." And one of the ways to achieve this is spiritually, is to keep our eyes on the cross, keep Jesus before us. These challenges that seem so overwhelming will melt before our eyes. They'll disappear as we come together collaborating as Catholic families, Catholic church in renewal and networking. Things will be just melted away. The Lord will take the burden off of our shoulders. If all we have to do is display it, put it at his feet, and share with each other, because our progress is critically based upon each and every one of you. Our response to this is a movement of renewal. We have to take an honest look at things. We need to make changes. We need to adjust Jesus Christ in our family, our church. We can ask ourselves, "How often in my week did I proclaim Jesus? How often did I call upon the Holy Spirit or use the Holy Spirit's name in my conversations, in my dialogue?" And we also want to go out. We want the Holy Spirit to draw us outward and outward to those margins, to those on the communities that are facing devastation, that are really hurting. We've got to step out of our comfort zone. So what is our path look like? Some of you are already familiar with this. It may be a reiteration, but even so, it is a pathway. It is a framework. It is going to be up to all of us coming together and in the parishes to renew, to refine, to change, to enhance. But one of the things we're doing first and foremost is to establish new entry points aside from the Mass. Many are using Alpha and moving along beautifully, inviting those that don't necessarily step one foot in our church, but are seeking God, are seeking Jesus, need the Holy Spirit. A second way is through radical hospitality. Also, we want to enliven and ensure vibrant and transformative eucharistic liturgies. Our faith formation programs are not just looking age-based, step processes for helping students grow in their faith. We're looking at the holistic approach. How do we unify families? How do we unify adults? How do we move forward? And of course, our objective optimally is to outreach, to serve others, to go near and far, and to outreach and bring Jesus to those that are rooted in joy and happiness and extend that joy to others, but also those that need a helping hand to draw out of the sorrow and move into the joy of Jesus Christ. You are a disciple with a mission. Each and every one of us is a disciple. We pray, we serve, we love Jesus, we share his name. And so each of us is being asked to identify those at our elbows, those that are a little bit further out, put on those binoculars and get your lens out, reflect, ask the Holy Spirit to guide you. Jesus's people, disciples, are everywhere. What we will be doing through this process is helping those that are currently disciples to become missionary disciples, and those that have their discipleship through baptism or being a child of God, to draw more closely to Jesus Christ. What will a transformed parish look like? Oh, it's gonna look fabulous. It's gonna look marvelous. And these are examples of setting some seeds, developing some ideas of what that would look like within our parishes when they're fully alive. So I invite you to go back and take a look at this resource and draw more deeply through reflection, through sharing with others, and to enliven what is already here as a framework for you. In Vicarious Five, Father Jose is doing an amazing job. Renewal has been happening, and it is happening, and it will continue to happen. The results are inspiring. And Father Jose has shared, "We have literally knocked on doors in the community and invited them to join us. We try to be very welcoming. The biggest reward we have experienced is seeing lives changed. This has brought joy to the newly united parish." And so there's other great stories, other witnesses. And I would ask you to be attentive to that and think about how you can draw others together and closer and share their story. Yes, you, each and every one of you plays an integral part in this renewal. One of our greatest challenges facing the church in this generation, we know, is to foster and enliven and develop a personal responsible for the church's mission. We're all being challenged on this. And how are we going to love in the gospel, in our world, in our church, and amongst those around us who we are influencing? Cardinal Supich has continually extended beautiful invitations to each and every one of us to join this renewal, to join this mission. So once again, I state, this is an invitational resource for you to share, to utilize, to talk about, to enliven, and to explore. And I thank you for this time together. And God bless you. May we continue to keep each other in prayer as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. And I am putting in the chat right now a link to where you can find that brochure online, so that you can review it. And you can, you know, reach out to Patricia or any of your, or your Vicarious Life on Formation Coordinator for questions about that, or as you know, all things Renew My Church related. But that's a good lead into our next segment, because I think this journey of renewal and specifically, you know, reconnecting is something we wanted to take a deeper dive in with a very specific kind of age demographic. I could try and know that many of you and many of us really have a lot of interest in and concerns about and struggles with, but also enthusiasm around. And with that, I will turn it over to, I believe, Chelsea, but I'm not sure.
I'm actually starting this off, but then we'll get to Chelsea.
There you go. Knew I was probably. This is Emily, who also, many of you know, works with both children and youth ministry, and with a lot of specifics around the confirmation and spirit days and that kind of age group.
Thanks, Kevin. All right. So like Kevin said, we're gonna talk a little bit about our young people and how to best reach this young generation of Catholics. So there's a lot of research right now about this. And so we're gonna dive just a little bit into that. Like Kevin said earlier, we really want to give y'all some time to talk with your peers through this and really get some good conversation going. We're gonna try to save as much time for that discussion as possible. So after we dive into the research, we're gonna talk a little bit about what relational authority is, because that's something that comes up in the research. We are gonna ask for your participation early on with a poll. And then we're gonna go into different dimensions of how to put this into practice in, by this, I mean relational authority, into practice in your relationships, not just with young people, but with really any of your relationships. And then we're gonna save a lot of time for this discussion group. Like Kevin mentioned, that part won't be recorded. So you can feel free to share without being worried about whether it's gonna be saved on this meeting recording. And then at the end, we'll share some resources for y'all and then talk about some possible ways to explore this in the future, if y'all are interested. Okay, so we've seen this general trend in research that these young, this young generation is becoming less affiliated with the Catholic faith. So we're having young people not report that they're not Catholic in practice or in name. While we know that this is not ideal and scary, what we're really gonna focus on is not that negative part of it, but really looking at research that's out about how to best reach this generation than if we're not getting them in the same traditional ways that we may have in past generations. And so one report that we really feel like has great information to share is Springtide. So Springtide Research Institute every year puts out a report called State of the Religion in Young People. And so this report is yearly for, they put out a new report yearly, and it research reaches, excuse me, young people aged 13 to 25. So starting middle school age, all the way into young adult. So we know that that's a wide range, but we think that the information that's coming out of this report is really applicable, even earlier than middle school. We're seeing this fourth and fifth grade even, having this type of information available would be really helpful for us. And so what we're gonna talk about today is relational authority, which is the title of their 2022 report. While the past couple of years, they've also released a report that's great. We are not talking about those, not because there's not really great information in those, but just we think that this 2022 report has so much that's applicable today for our catechist and our catechetical leaders while they're interacting with young people. And so like I said, we've seen a general trend and lack of religious affiliation with our young people. And this is confirmed in Springtide's report. But even that is a little bit, maybe up, more up in the air than it seems, because of the people that reported, self-reported as Catholic, almost half of them said that they had little to no trust in organized religion. So those people that are, young people that are saying they're Catholic, but then don't have trust in organized religion. And then on the other hand, there's about 30% of unaffiliated. So people are saying they're not Catholic. But then they say that they're trying to live out their religious beliefs in their daily lives. And so instead of focusing on affiliated versus unaffiliated, what we really wanna do is focus on the young people and their religious impulse. So while they might not be saying, "I'm 100% Catholic and I believe these Catholic things," like trust in organized religion, what they are saying is that they have what they perceive to be good and true and integrate it into a wider worldview. And so instead of focusing on this maybe alarming rate of unaffiliated Catholic young people, we instead wanna focus on how we can reach them. And so what's more important, these reports are showing, than whether they identify specifically as Catholic, is the relationships we're building with our young people. So when it comes to mitigating a young person's loneliness and helping them feel like there is meaning in their life, it's these relationships that are making the biggest difference. So young people are relying on relationship who trusted mentors to find meaning in their lives. And because of this, it's these relationships that are one of the most important factors in whether the faith is passed on. So before they get to this catechesis stage, they have to have this trusted relationship with the adult that is passing on the faith. So you have a couple of stats here from the report. There are almost 30% of young people have one or fewer adults in their life that they can turn to if they need to talk. And we see underneath, that's even smaller for those middle school to high school aged kids. And 69% have three or fewer meaningful relationships in a regular day, and 41% depend on a close relationship to help them find meaning. So we see that this trust, this meaningful relationships are really important, but not all of our young people are feeling like they have that, especially when we look at religious leaders. So this is of the people, the young people surveyed, only 9%, 8%, sorry, would say that the religious leader would be an adult that they could turn to in their life. So majority of young people do not feel like religious leaders could be that trusted adult, could be that person who they have a meaningful relationship with. So before we focus on catechesis itself, we wanna focus on developing meaningful relationships with young people, so we're able to be those trusted adults in their lives. And so in order to do this, I'm gonna turn it over to Chelsea.
Sure. So yeah, this, this report's really interesting. Emily kept saying 2022, it was actually 2020. It came out in 2021.
Sorry, my bad.
It's cool. It came out in 2021 in response to data that was gathered in the year 2020. So, and we've heard, if you've heard anything about Gen Z, which is roughly high school age, well, but the age survey, they are among, like they're called the lonely generation. These are people who, like, like the data just said, don't have a lot of personal relationships in their life. So it was interesting, when Springtide started doing research, kind of opened to whatever came up, it was fascinating that all of a sudden, these like need for relationships kind of rose, so much so that it became the title of their annual report. So their response, it's really great. So they acknowledge that young people's lives are complicated, especially when it comes to faith. We can all agree that's true. And then they also saw that young people thrive and engage when they encounter trusted adults who care for, listen, and guide them. So kind of these two converging elements led to the title of this report, which is, can you hit it, Deb? Relational Authority. Yeah, okay, next slide, please. So relational authority is a term that Springtide made up, but it very basically is rooted in relationship and earned not through credentials, but through practices of sympathetic expertise shaped and offered through experience. So a long way to say that it's really about building a relationship with people, which sounds obvious on one hand, if you think about the most important things in our lives that are passed on to us are usually done in person, one-on-one with people that we love and care for, who love and care for us. But this is kind of where we're at. I mean, this is just interesting that this is what what people are calling, what people are yearning for, and maybe what's maybe lacking a little bit sometimes in our programs. Yes. So relational authority is just building a relationship with someone so that they feel comfortable with you and will listen to what you have to say. It doesn't mean that you're abandoning your expertise, your agenda or advice for sort of lukewarm concern. Yeah, it definitely doesn't mean that you're giving up what you have. It's building a familiar inconsistent connection by, there's a couple of things. Being humble and aware of your own limitations, actively listening for similarities and experience, letting young people know their priority, not a point you're making or a program you're pushing, and discerning when and how to offer your expertise. So put it plainly, people, especially young people, we have to earn the right to be heard. That often we feel, you know, we feel we've, we've gone to school, we've gone to the workshops, we've listened, we've done certification. We should be listened to because we have authority and because of our, you know, we've been elevated to whatever position at parish. That unfortunately doesn't mean a lot to a 14-year-old in confirmation class. What means a lot to them is if you show that you care about them, about their life, not just that they're another member in your program. So it sounds obvious, but it's also very, sometimes can be very difficult to do, especially when you're talking about very large parishes that have very large programs. Yes, it can definitely be a difficult thing to do. I like to think about one of the patrons seen of youth, Saint John Bosco. And he, I'm paraphrasing here, but he basically said that if, if, you know, he worked with orphan boys, he said, "If they, if they know that you love them, they will follow you anywhere." So the idea that he loved people first, and then had, you know, I think there are like two or three saints that came out of John Bosco's, like, homes that he was running because they felt the love from him, and then were more inclined to listen to him. So next slide, please. Oh, all right. Am I doing this, Deb? This part? Yes, I thought so. Just double, so with a poll, just to see if any of this sounds familiar to you. It's gonna pop up on your screen. All right. So these are just for you and your own personal life. Think of a caring adult from your youth who helped you to thrive. Where was that person a part of your life? Oh, there are three questions. Actually, if we weren't sure if this is gonna work, this is great. There are three questions. Go ahead and answer them at your, yep, and then the results will pop up here. We'll give you, oh, it's giving you some time. All right. So caring adults, most of us said our family, church, neighborhood. What was it about a caring adult that stands out in your memory? There isn't a right answer. All these are important. I just like knowing where people are coming from. And then when or where have you had the opportunity to be a trusted mentor for someone? Oh, that's good. Great. Okay. All right. Okay. People can see, can everyone see the results? No, Mary Ellen cannot. Okay. I don't know how to. I don't know how to. All right. I don't want to read these out loud to everyone. Let me see what I can. Okay, why?
You should have at the bottom where your microphone video is an option for polls that you can click on and it should pull up the results.
Okay.
Just so for people.
Sorry, everyone. Okay, it's telling me right now I'm sharing. Is anyone seeing any results or yes, awesome. Thank you for the nods. Deacon Benjamin Javier.
Yes.
Yes, I'm seeing the results.
Great. So here's our results. Sorry, everyone. I thought you could see them before. So yes, caring adults often found school, churches, sports, neighborhood, a lot of them found us, found them in their families. That's right. All right. A caring adult that stands out in your memory. All of these are important. But it looks like everyone, they listen and process. And then when or where have you had the opportunity? This is great that lots of people have had the opportunity be a trusted mentor for someone. Okay. We are going to keep on going. All right. So how do we go about creating a relationship? Again, I appreciate that Spring Tide and we're trying to give you a little framework. If this sounds like, yes, I agree, relationships are important. Where do I start? This is where we start. This little Pentagon diagram comes straight from the research. And these are kind of the five big components that they found were key in those relationships that passed on the faith. Right. There's all kinds of relationships we can build with younger people in our lives, but these five dimensions are the, the keys to building a relationship based on trust in which you can pass on your beliefs. So Emily and I are going to go through each of these just real quick. And then we're going to have some time to chat. So the first one is listening. Listening sounds very obvious, but if you've ever taken a class, we always talk about active listening. It's actually a work, like a skill. If you think about people in your life who you're like, I really like talking to them because they're good listeners. It's a skill that you have to practice. Most of us are not born knowing. We can hear things, but we don't know how to listen. So I listed out some of the qualities here if we want to click on those. Great. So things like being curious, being engaged, remembering what people say, sounds simple, actually really tricky to do. When you talk to someone, are you distracted? Are you looking at your phone? Are you looking at your watch? Are you also reading email? Are you like not paying attention? Are you thinking of how you're going to respond to them before they stop talking? Right? Are you already thinking? And we're all guilty of this. I'm definitely guilty of this, but how do we, how do we turn, how do we help our catechists and ourselves become active listeners that we're, yeah, we're listening to people in a way that's respectful, makes them feel heard. So being curious, asking questions, being engaged, you know, like appropriate reactions. And then remembering what people say. The, the relational authority is not a one-time thing. It's not, you know, it's not an easy sort of, someone comes to you, have one great conversation, their lives are changed, you walk away. I mean, if, if that's all the Holy Spirit wants to work, great. That is not my experience a lot, unfortunately. It's often weeks, months, years even before someone's in a place that they trust you enough to want to hear what you have to say. But listening is always a good way to start, especially young people. Especially teenagers often don't feel like anyone wants to listen to them, even their parents, you know, that people don't actually care a whole lot about what they're doing. So the act of listening to someone and being interested in their life and asking questions is often really revolutionary for people. So, okay, next one.
And so next is transparency. And so in order to really know someone and be known by them, you have to be willing to share authentically about yourself. This is really important for young people who are trying to develop trust that they feel like they can know who you are. And so this is great for catechists to work on not only sharing experiences that they've had by telling stories about their own life, but also doing it in a way that invites the young people to share back to them. This knowing experiences is a form, sorry, experience, having experiences is a form of your own knowledge. And so when you share that you have this knowledge, someone who might be in a similar situation or might be going through something similar gives authority to you to speak to that when they know that that's part of your shared understanding together. So even something as simple as knowing that you have younger siblings. And if you've spoken a little bit about your relationship with them, if you have a young person who is going through something with their siblings, they might be more willing to bring that up in the conversation if you've had that transparency with them. With transparency, there are two things to consider. One is still wanting to maintain that appropriate boundary. It's not an invitation to just share everything about yourself. We know that that's not appropriate. And even in your relationship with colleagues, not only young people, there are boundaries that you want to maintain in that. And then second is it really has to be authentic sharing. That authenticity is a really important part of it. You don't want to just try to relate to them for the sake of relating. If you are not into video games, talking about your experience playing video games with young people isn't going to hit on that same way that you might hope it will. They see through that. So when you make, when you're sharing, you want to make sure that you're just sharing about your real life experiences and you're finding commonalities of that.
Great. So the next one is integrity. Integrity is, I like how they put this, made it very succinct, following up, following through, being accountable and being authentic. If we think about often the lives of young people, there aren't, there especially some of our smart people who come from families that have divorce or estrangement, something like that, or even families that are separated, maybe because of immigration or something like that. Often there are not a lot of things that they can count on in their life. So an adult saying, you can trust me, I'll be here for you. They say, yeah, okay, I'll believe it when I see it, based on people's experience. But you showing up week after week, day after day, saying the same things, offering that loving presence, that listening ear, that's huge for people. Yeah, just being who you say you are, which all of you, I assume you work for the church, you're already there, you are people of integrity. And it's the kind of everyday sort of stuff that keeps us, that keeps kids knowing that you're going to be there and because in the way that you show up for them every day. Yep, that's it.
Next is care. Pretty simply, young people want to know that you care for them, that you're invested in that relationship with them in a serious and a committed way. This one, well, honestly, all of these are likely things that you're already bringing to relationships, but really just framing and thinking about how you're doing them intentionally is really important. Care is bigger than just doing discreet actions. It has to be something continuous. It has to be continuously wanting and working for their flourishing. And the key with care, because like I said, we already have people who are volunteering to participate in this ministry. And a big part of that is because they care for young people. But a big part of this care piece or this care dimension is showing young people that you care. You can do this by living out some of the other dimensions, really like talking to them and listening to them and responding in a way that shows that you are listening. And so remembering something that was important to them, whether it be like they just had a big game or it's their birthday and then actively doing something to show that you remember. So a note or a balloon on their birthday or even following up, asking about the game. Those are action steps that put your care into action for them to see. This is also important to advocate for them in their environments, whether this be the parish or the larger community. When they see you, when young people see you advocating, standing up for them and speaking in a positive way on their behalf, they show this are able to see that you care for them, not only when you're just face-to-face with them, but when you're in a larger environment. And so yeah, this does a continuous display of care that really shows young people that you are invested in them.
Great. And then the last one is expertise. And it's, they distinctly like put this last because often this is what we lead with, right? This is how I feel comfortable. You know, I did really well in school and this, in this subject matter. So when you have a question about this, like I know the right answer. I'm just waiting for you to stop talking so I can tell you the right answer and what page it's on. That's often our tendency. But expertise is best given in small doses after carefully discerning how to offer it. So yeah, that's why it's last. It's intentionally last. Yes, taking the time to learn about people, who they are, letting them know that you listen to them, you care about them, you're consistently showing up for them, and you're being honest about who you are, makes your expertise that much more valuable and that much more likely to be remembered, right? Very often people don't remember what we say, but they remember how we made them feel or how they felt listened to or cared for or loved. So expertise is going to come there at the end. And that's why it is important, like it's important that you go through your certification and that you're trained. And even being aware of, you know, the appropriate boundaries, like we were talking about, even being aware of what you're good at. You know, knowing in yourself, like this is something that I'm not comfortable with, you know, knowing and actively working on that. So for me, when I was in school, I knew that being in hospitals and being with people who were ill was actually really difficult for me. Did not come naturally. I felt very awkward. I did a year volunteering as a chaplain and it was really, really tough. I did not enjoy it. It was not my calling, but I got so much more comfortable with people who were ill. So now I can, if I have, you know, then like the next year, I ended up having to take a couple of students from a summer camp to the hospital and I felt very confident in that arena. So that was an expertise that I needed to grow and work on. And then also knew like, okay, this, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm basically comfortable, but I'm going to pass you off at a certain point because I know where my expertise ends, you know. Yeah. So that's also knowing our own limits. You're, you are not God. You're not going to fix everything. So where, where do you, how far can you travel with a young person? At what point do you need to hand them off? So when I was working at the school, my office as the campus minister was right next door to the counselor's office. And there were a couple of times where I would have a student come and talk with me and we'd chat for a while. And they get to a point where they were saying something and I'm like, great, let's go. You know, I'm, I'm at the end. I'm not a counselor. So we'd get up and together we'd go walk to the counselor's office. Sometimes they're like, oh, I don't like, you know, this old page, she's not very nice. I was like, I don't, you know, like, that's fine. That's why I'm coming with you through this relationship. You know, I care about you, but I also know this is where my expertise ends and you need some professional at this. So, okay, is the next thing. Okay. So we're going to split you into discussion groups because there's a lot of stuff here. Yeah, to unpack, these questions will be put in the chat. So you should get a little invitation for a breakout group. Yeah. And then just hit that join. And then we will see you guys probably ten minutes or so. We have a good chunk of time. All right. As everybody's coming back, I think we got most of them. So yeah, as you know, we only have a certain amount of time. We're not trying to fix everything right now. We just wanted to give you the chance to start thinking about it, present some information, which is going to look different in everyone's context. But we trust that with your kind of expertise on your local community, that you can kind of take some of the stuff we talk about and maybe think about like, what is the one next step that you're going to do? That was the third question is like, one easy thing to focus on. If you look at the whole thing, it's overwhelming, but maybe I shouldn't have focused on like talking about being a good listener to my catechists. We did have a question come in and we just want to address it real quick. So this is, sorry. This is difficult to do in large groups. The five, the little Pentagon are always things that you can do as like a large group leader, you know, being kind and caring as you talk to people. But really this, you can only build relationships with people in smaller groups. So you think about, especially when you're talking about your middle school programs, middle school and high school programs, the ratio of adults to kids is really important. You are great, but you cannot build a very loving, caring, close relationships with two hundred kids. That's just not possible. So what, it's not. So what can, who are the five kids that you can mentor? Or who are the, you know, who are the couple of kids that you can reach out to and then kind of helping your, your catechist to see themselves as a mentor for a small group of people? I think so. Next, we have some resources just for further reading.
We know, and we know we're a little over. If you have to go, thank you for being with us. We'll make sure to send this PowerPoint and so you'll get all of these link. We just wanted to say this State of Religion in Young People that Spring Tide puts out each year is a free resource. So the twenty twenty-one is linked here. If you go on their website or their blog, you'll see their newer reports as well. A couple of webinars in the middle here, if you're a youth minister and you were around Chelsea and I a couple of years ago, this effective way to engage young people that Director Spring Tide put on for us there. And then we'll have some articles for you to be able to share with your catechists as well. And then we just wanted to kind of use this as a jumping off point to see if this topic is something that we might be interested in going deeper into, especially around what Chelsea was saying, like helping your catechists who are spending a lot of time with young people face-to-face, helping them to make an impact. So we were thinking maybe doing something in, in the form of a summer workshop, if that is something that you'd be interested in. You could type your thoughts in the chat. You can jump in, in person, virtual. Yes, this sounds like something you'd like. No, thank you.
Yeah, we could even do, we could do this. There's more we can talk about with this, obviously. What would be helpful? Do we want to do more webinars on this? Would you be interested? Would it help you in person? Thanks, Patricia. Would we want to, yeah, how can we help you? Is this like great information? We don't want to talk about it anymore. Or how can we, how can we keep any, if it comes back to you, you can always email one of us. We're here all the time. So. We just want to support you. I think, Kevin, did you have some sort of announcement at the end?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Well, great.
No, no, I just thank you, everybody. I know we're over time. We'll send all these materials to you and you know, we're just, we're always, you know, always looking for feedback on the best use of this time. We thought this was a topic a lot of people are, were seem to be interested in and struggling with. And so if you ever have suggestions about, hey, could you address this in a town hall, even just opportunity to talk with your colleagues about it, you know, that you don't normally see every day, feel free to send any of us an email and say, hey, it'd be nice to have a discussion about this in town hall. We're always open to suggestions and otherwise just really thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
Have a blessed afternoon, everybody.
Bye. Thanks, everyone.